We will now convene our regular session. I want to welcome our student board representative Fernando Saldivar from Visalia Technical Early College High School. Thank you for coming. Adam Avalos will serve as Spanish interpreter for this meeting. Meeting attendees who would like to listen to Spanish interpretation in the meeting, please pick up headphones from the table located in the back of this meeting. This announcement will not be shared in Spanish.
Armabalos servirá como intérprete al español para esta reunión. Invitamos a los asistentes de la reunión que deseen escuchar la interpretación al español, el ir por audífonos a la mesa ubicada al fondo de esta sala de reuniones.
Thank you. This meeting is being webcast live and recorded. The recording or webcast may capture images and sounds of those attending the meeting. Members of the public wanting to provide public comment on items listed in tonight's agenda, we recommend you fill out a public comment form, the green form located on the table in the back of this room. Please hand your completed form to Delia Smart, their board manager, before the item comes up on the agenda. We recommend that you complete a separate form for each agenda item you'd like to comment on. Ms. Smart is sitting at the table in the back of the room. Members of the public providing public comment, please use the microphone on the stand located in the front of the room. We'll now have our pledge of allegiance by board member, Board Clerk Jackie Gabey. There was no action taken in closed session. Revisions to agenda and/or enclosure items. There are revised meeting handouts for this evening's meeting, enclosure number two, sixteen and eighteen. We have a revision to the agenda. Agenda item eight point two point four, school district transportation services for residential placement of student number one, four, two, eight, four, eight, six, nine, five, two. Enclosure twelve point five has been added to the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the revised agenda?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
On a motion by Board Member Casper Soleno, a second by Board Member Viegas, call for a vote.
The vote passes unanimously with one absent.
Bidding opening sale of surplus property. Four point one. Board item four point one is the opening examination and declaration of all sealed proposals which have been received regarding the sale of district surplus property, six, four, nine, South County Center Drive, assessor's parcel number APN zero, nine, five, dash, zero, one, zero, dash, zero, six, three, and a calling for qualifying oral bids pursuant to resolution number twenty-two, dash, twenty-three, dash, twenty-two. The board is nearing the end of the extension, extensive legal process to sell this property. The following is a brief summary of the material steps completed. The board on June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty declared the property surplus and declared its intent to sell the property. The board instructed staff to offer the property for sale to certain other public agencies as required by law. Staff sent the notices to the required agencies. The offer period expired and the board received no interest from any of these public agencies. On February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, by resolution number twenty-two, dash, twenty-three, dash, twenty-two, the board directed the sale of property in accordance with the competitive bid process required by the education code, establish the minimum bid price and deposit, and establish required procedures for the submission of proposals by responsible bidders. In accordance with resolution number twenty-two, dash, twenty-three, dash, twenty-two, tonight is the designated date and time for opening sealed bids and calling for oral bids from responsible bidders. At this point, the board will now ask our chief operations officer Eric Kerr to open and examine and declare each written proposal that has been received.
President Gamoyen, we received no written bids.
The board will now call for oral bids that comply with the law and bid requirements. The procedures and requirement for oral bids are as follows. Number one, any initial oral bid must exceed the highest written proposal by at least five percent. Since no written proposals were submitted, the oral bid must be equal to or higher than a minimum bid amount identified in the bid instructions. Number two, to place a bid, please identify yourself by name and state the amount of your bid. Number three, if two bidders attempt to make an oral bid in the same amount, the district will randomly assign the bid amount to one and then call for higher bids. Number four, once no higher bid is made, the bidder's name and the bid amount for the highest oral bid will be declared. Acceptance of this bid may be final only after the bidder has submitted the bid in writing on the mandatory bid forms. Mr. Kerr, will you identify the minimum amount of initial oral bid and then call for oral bids?
Sure, the minimum amount for the initial opening is six million, six hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars and must be accompanied by a bid deposit of two hundred and one thousand dollars.
Are there any oral bids from qualified bidders? Okay. No oral bids were received. At this time, we recommend that the board take the following action. We recommend, oh. Sorry about that, Mr. Kerr.
That's okay. At this time, we recommend that the board take the following action. We recommend the board find it has not received any proposals or oral bids that confirm, conform to all the terms and conditions specified in the resolution and mandatory bid instructions approved by the Visel Unified School District Board of Trustees for the sale of the property and direct staff to take appropriate further steps to dispose of the property.
Board members, I will now ask for a motion to find the board has not received any proposals or oral bids that conform to all the terms and conditions specified in the resolution and mandatory bid instructions approved by the Viselia Unified School District Board of Trustees for the sale of property and direct staff to take appropriate further steps to dispose of the property. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
On a motion by Board Member Casper Soleno, second by Board Member Naylor, all in favor.
The vote passes. Student representative voting yes and passes unanimously with one absent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kerr. Agenda item number five, student performance, Mr. Thompson.
All right, I'm gonna let the team come on in and then I'll do introductions. So come on in. While they're coming in, board and cabinet, executive cabinet, you guys want to come out front and then I'll do introductions as everyone gets seated. So tonight, we're in for a treat. I'm pleased to welcome El Diamante High School Chamber Singers under the direction of Justin Witt. They have received superior ratings at all of their festivals this season. Tonight, they will be performing two selections for us. One called Cry Out and Shout, and the other one is Halo Rotan, which is an Indonesian folk song connoting tug of war, from my understanding, of my research that I did today. Let's give it up for El Diamante Chamber Singers. Thank you to El Diamante Chamber Singers. Let's give them one more big hand. Thank you guys for the work that you guys are doing and the effort that you're doing. Well done.
A drink, good. See you again.
Thank you, El Diamante and Mr. Witt. Focus on number six, focus on learning. Mister Spotlight on Good Things Happening, Mister Shrum.
All right, well, good evening. What an inspirational and great way to start our board meeting. I didn't come with my six million dollar check, so we'll move forward with the spotlight. But a great job. You know, it's always exciting when we start board meetings now with a demonstration of our students and through the arts or other things. We have exceptional students in our district doing exceptional things every day, and it's teachers like our great teacher that we had here this evening that make those things happen, right? That help kids find their passion, that help ensure that they're learning. You know, I had a great opportunity this week. I was with a couple of trustees, Gamoyen and Belt, at Elbow Creek, I think it was, and went into a classroom and a little student was reading his whole book to me. And you know, that just doesn't happen on its own, right? It happens because a dedicated and passionate teacher took time to make sure the student could sing or to make sure the student could read. Or whatever it might be, right? So I just want to give a huge shout out to our teachers, our coaches, all of those folks who make that talent shine. Just what a great job. And also, before I begin the spotlight, I do just want to take a minute, you know, to acknowledge another tragic event in our schools across the nation yesterday with the shooting that happened in Nashville. And you know, anytime these things happen, unfortunately, all too often, it has become almost sometimes not even headline anymore, right? Because it's become something that is just now almost even commonplace, which almost, I don't even know how to say how that makes me feel or how that probably makes people feel. But what I do want people to know is that from the moment we got here, this board came together, we have kept safety and security in the forefront of decisions, in the forefront of investments. And you know, we will never be able to name the time and place something happens, but what we can do is make sure we're as prepared as possible, not only proactively to make sure our campuses are safe and secure, but also how are we connecting to students? How are we making sure that we're recognizing when there are areas to intervene right ahead of time? And so a couple of things I just want to reiterate or remind our community about is our board has made unprecedented investments in a couple of areas. One, our safety, our cameras, those sorts of things. Our single point of entry or Vercata system, as that's known, is working. We're continuing to work on installing that. We've invested in a visitor and volunteer, an emergency alert system called Raptor that's being piloted at a couple of our campuses. And then we're hoping as we build that system out to go live to all of our campuses. One of the things that we want to make sure is if you're on a campus, that you have followed the right procedure. You've checked in. You, if you're a staff member, you wear your ID. There's a reason we tell people to do that. If you're a visitor or volunteer, you have a sticker, right? And now there's going to be electronic way that we can run some information. And so everybody visibly should be able to see on campus, you either have the ID or a sticker, right, of course, or a student. Watching our entry points, making sure those are staffed and when they're not, that those are closed and secure. And these are just a few of the things that we've invested in. One of the largest investments by our board was we took in about a week, took every single one of our district employees about a couple of months ago, I think it was, through active shooter training, ALIS active shooter training. And although that was a hard training to go through, it was several hours, every single one of us up here and in this room, many of our board members also attended that. We need people to be equipped and know what to do should an unfortunate event occur. And the work that's underway right now is to talk about what will that look like this fall? What will student training look like? Because we're going to have student training modules all the way from elementary to high school, being able to inform our parents so that they know what that training will be and can make a decision whether they want their child to participate in that. I hope they do, but they'll have that option. And then, of course, continuing staff training, right? So for our teachers out there that, well, I went through this four-hour training. That's not enough. I know that. And so we're committed to continuing that, growing that. And then also, what did we learn from that training? Teachers, after that training, began to immediately identify areas of improvement. Had that training not occurred, they wouldn't have been able to identify those. And so now our teachers are holding us accountable. Here's some things we identified. Now we need to do something about it. And we are working on those things as well with Eric. And so I'm thankful that we're in a position where we're able to identify some of those things because of the training that our staff and teachers received. So I did just want to take a minute in light of the tragic events in Nashville. One, just to share, of course, our thoughts and prayers with all those affected, but also to let folks know that we are continuing that safety and security journey here in Visel Unified as well. So turning to a few more things, a little bit more exciting and spotlighting some of our great students and kids and teachers across the district, several things we have tonight, because, of course, we canceled the last board meeting, back and forth, as everyone remembers. We had the threat of flooding and some other things. And so we had to make decisions. And then fortunately, for a lot of our immediate area, that did not occur. But we also know there are parts of Tulare County and other areas where we do have families and staff members in our district impacted by that flooding. So we certainly want to keep them in our thoughts as well. And so spotlight, we had Read Across American. As you can see here, this was launched in nineteen eighty-eight, ninety-eight by a committee of educators. And so you see here where students are encouraged to read. We have lots of schools, board members represented, Highland Elementary, Walter Joy, our principal, Ivanhoe Elementary. We have Board Member Gabey at GLC, Dr. Viegas at Viva Blunt, and then Trustee Belt and Casper Soleno at Viva Blunt as well and at Goshen. So I think almost every board member was able to get out to at least a side as well as many of our district team members just to share the joy of reading and seeing that excitement on our kids' face. And that's always, you know, just an amazing thing. And it takes us back to our purpose, takes us back to why we're here, right? We're here to make sure our kids can learn, that our kids can read and our kids can do math. And if we do that and we do it well, other things are going to take care of themselves down the road. Another spotlight is our college tours. This board will remember that we made a commitment that we want to make sure every junior steps foot on a college campus this year. And we know that's even too late, right? But it's where we started. But here, you're going to see some examples of there are earlier opportunities that our students are beginning to experience. And so here we have Global Learning Charter, seventh and eighth graders toured UC Berkeley Friday, then met with VUSD alumni that go to the school, which I think is also a great connection, right? You go to the school, but then you meet people who are from your hometown or who are from your areas like, oh, okay, well, if they can go here, I might be successful and can go here too. Fifth and sixth grade there visited Cal Poly, also where alumni spoke with the students. And you can see some of those exciting faces and seeing early what's possible, right? If you do what you need to do in school with family support, district support, what's possible? Oops, sorry, skipped ahead too soon. On the left here, we have Ridgeview hosted Tulare County Science Olympiak Competition for middle and high school teams. Shout out to our Ridgeview Raptor for qualifying for the state competition in April. Every single Ridgeview team member took home a medal in at least one event, with many earning a medal in every event they competed in. Pretty phenomenal there. On the right, Global Learning Charter, Ms. Mo's class awarded California State Champions Reed Bowl Primary Conference. On the right, or on the next street, on March ninth, we had the Tulare County Spelling Bee and in first place, Sarvanya Kadham. And he's here, stand up, take a bow. He is in sixth grade at Oak Grove Elementary School, accompanied by parents and, of course, the proud principal as well. And not to be outdone, we also had another placement, Bryce Melgar, an eighth grade student from Ridgeview Middle School, who was last year's champion. So congratulations to both of those. And I think you will now go on to state and national, going on to nationals. So congratulations and we wish you the best of luck and thank you for being here tonight. Continuing on our partnership between GAMS and the PAL program, thank you to our youth service officer, Chappa, for bringing students together to write an inspirational essay. The essay was about someone who inspires them and the top students were provided with lunch from In-N-Out. That's a nice treat. And this is, you know, just another example of how in Viselia we know the power of connectivity and how we're working to make sure our students are connected to meaningful activities, whether that's spelling bee or other sorts of things within and/or outside, Green Acres Middle School, sorry, I used the acronym there. Educators of the Week, this continues. This is becoming a theme. I'm kind of liking this. Every spotlight, we have teachers who have been recognized by students, by schools, and have been featured on local television. And so we had a couple in these past few weeks. Victoria Rosano, a preschool teacher at Linwood, and Mackenzie Nola, a sixth grade teacher at Riverway. So congratulations to their educator of the week recognition. Pretty awesome. Again, I mean, the accolades of our students just keep coming, right? We're proud to announce Josiah Aldaco at El Diamante was awarded one out of five hundred students nationwide to receive this prestigious Dell Scholarship. It includes, now get this, twenty thousand dollars, personalized support and academic financial aid, laptop computer, two thousand dollars in textbook credits, a scholar resource network and access to teletherapy. What an amazing opportunity for the student. And thank you to the counselors, teachers and others that help make our students aware of these opportunities and position them for success to receive some of those. Speaking of success, I have an opportunity to meet with this young gentleman this week. Thomas Rosa was awarded the office, state office of FFA State Sentinel. This is a monumental honor and accomplishment. He is the only state sentinel from Viselia since nineteen eighty-five. And before that, it was nineteen fifty-three. The last Viselia state officer was four years ago, which was also El Diamante, who won president. And before that, it had been twenty-four years. He's now the leader of over a hundred thousand FFA members in California. It's the largest youth organization in the nation, over three hundred thirty chapters in California. FFA is alive and well in almost all of our high schools and other campuses. And so, by the way, California, I didn't realize this, is the second highest FFA membership in the nation, followed by Texas. And so it's fitting when you think about the agriculture and the richness of those industries here in Viselia, here in California and in Viselia. And so congratulations to Thomas, and this is just an interesting sidebar. The, I think the earlier this week, I had an opportunity to go to one of the middle schools and the El Diamante team, including Thomas, was there showing the kids in eighth grade and encouraging them to join these opportunities when they come to ninth grade. And I'm telling you, the eighth grade, following these high school leaders around, doing exactly what they asked. It was amazing to see our high school students in that light, so, and Thomas as well. So shout out to them. Lots of accomplishments, of course, in sports. You see, we had several teams recognized at a recent board meeting and our winner team academic award, top five out of a hundred and thirty schools. One for GPA, we have boys wrestling with Redwood. We have girls soccer El Diamante, girls wrestling Redwood, boys wrestling Golden West and girls basketball at El Diamante. And so you see the placement in the average team GPA. So again, this just further goes to show that kids who are connected do better in school, right? Whether it's sports, whether it's VAPA, whether it's FFA, whatever it might be. And so that's why we want to continue to encourage that. So congratulations to those teams. Also, several spotlights that we want to make. And of course, in recognition of Women's History Month and other things, we've spotlighted this month, not only some of our staff, our students, our community. Here, we're spotlighting Redwood's Jenna Creason, California state champion for women's wrestling. So congratulations to her. What an amazing accomplishment. Also continuing, Redwood High School Dance Team, Dance Force, competed at the USA Northern California Dance Classic against northern and central high school teams. The results, first place by a large group, varsity hip hop. First place, medium group varsity lyrical. The team qualified for the USA Dance National Championship, which is the top division. They will be attending, or they just attended. This was updating our dates here. They were going to attend after the last board meeting. Now, this board meeting, they have already attended. So we'll have to find out how they did there. But great job to Redwood High School Dance Team. Moving on to some other spotlights, Viselia Technical Early College recognized eighteen of its students on Friday at its sports assembly. Through the multi-school agreement with CIF, these students are allowed to participate in sports, band or orchestra at the school of their residence. band or orchestra at the school of their residence, because that particular site may not offer those opportunities. And those schools of residence, Golden West, Eldie Amante, Mount Whitney and Redwood. Continuing here, you see some more spotlights, Golden West High School, CMEA Festival in Ridley, Redwood Procrution and Color Guard, then in Clovis East, and then Redwood Honor Bands at a music convention in Fresno. Also excited to spotlight of a couple of our students who had from Redwood, who had their art chosen to for the front and back cover of the Tulare County Farm Bureau Student Art Calendar for twenty-three, twenty-four, Emma Souza, grade twelve at Redwood and Jasmine Rivas, grade twelve at Redwood as well. So no tell how many thousands of people will see their artwork on that calendar. Continuing here, spotlights, we've had a couple of groups presented, Perfect Cinderella, The Untold Story, and then Ridgeview Middle, Middle presented Legally Blonde. I had the opportunity to see all of those shows and they were exceptional. We have Mount Whitney's annual dance show featuring five dance classes at Mount Whitney and also featured guest performers from the famous Mount Whitney High School Staff Dancers Cheer Band Choir Pioneer Panthers, Floroquero Washington Elementary dancers. So what a great community event. Maybe we need to have those staff come and, and do one of our spotlights. Right, yeah, maybe. Continuing spotlighting the district, you know, obviously we've been in hiring season that happens this time of year. You're going to hear in a report from Assistant Superintendent Thompson here a little bit later about some of the new positions that we're adding to our district. And so of course, going out and making sure we have the absolute best talent in Visalia is extremely important. So recently job fairs, over sixty offers, offers were made for hard to fill positions. Some positions have been open for a while this year. We see a couple of recruitment events, Fresno State. Thank you to a couple of our principals helping out with that and also events around the area as well. You've heard me talk a lot about our continuing partnership with local universities and colleges all across our state. And what we're wanting to do with this is build memorandums of understanding where our students know, when you come into high school, if you do these things, you are guaranteed admission. Right? And the support that comes with it. And so we are continuing this journey. We now have our second memorandum of understanding signed with Fresno Pacific University and we had a signing, I believe it was week before last. And so excited to continue to build these opportunities. One of the things I want to give a shout out to our teachers, one of the things I heard from our teachers across our elementary sites is we do not have a program focused on phonics. And as we know, if phonics is critical, pre-K kindergarten, first grade, second grade, right? If they don't get that solid, strong foundation, it causes challenges throughout their lifetime in reading. And so as a district, we have not had a coordinated coherent approach to how we teach phonics. And so recognizing that, we've brought some teachers together from our teaching and learning division to help us put together a recommendation that we'll be bringing to this board. I'm very excited about, I want to say at the next meeting or well, coming soon, next, next meeting or two, for a curriculum adoption for phonics for our pre-K or for our kindergarten through second grade. So we're very, very excited about that. Shout out to our teams, one, the Synergistic Energy Star. This is the only energy efficiency certification that's based on actual verified energy performance. This helps lower our operating cost, which means we're spending less money on things like that. And we can spend more money on our students, on our teachers and other things. And then not to mention the benefit that comes for the environment. Also continuing, do you want to give a shout out to our communications team led by Andre Pessina and Board President Gamoyan and I had an opportunity to go to the CALSPRA, which is the California Schools Public Relations Association Conference a couple of weeks ago. And very proud that this team won seventeen awards. It was the most of any district in the state of California that was there. So shout out to them and also won the overall gold award. And so these awards are driven by campaigns that the team put together, right? Like Be Ready, One Visalia Connected and other things. And we heard and I heard loud and clear when I came here, we need to do better at communicating. Now, we know we're not where we need to be yet. We still have work to do. We will always have work to do, but we have started that work and we've started it with a bang. And I compliment this mighty small team for their great accomplishments and impact they're having on the district. Want to take a minute too, to give a little spotlight to something that we brought to this board's attention earlier this year that our board agreed to allow us to pursue. And that is our continuing journey to increase dual enrollment opportunities for our students throughout the district. And so we partnered with a group, they're called Equity Lab. This is a group that works with colleges all across the nation, Stanford, Harvard, Yale, Arizona State. And they bring classes of high interest to schools with and communities that maybe don't have a significant college, you know, going track record, that sort of thing, right? And they choose professors and teaching assistants who really know how to engage with students. And as part of what's unique also about this program is they partner with our teachers. So our teachers are really facilitators of learning in this program, helping the students access the instruction that they receive from these universities. And of course, they'll receive university credit as well and possibly even industry certification, depending on, you know, what the class might be. And so I'm excited to have a couple of individuals here with us tonight who are going to come and share with the board a couple of takeaways from the program and they are in this as well. And so we have student Emmanuel Santa Cruz in eleventh grade at Mount Whitney High School with his teacher, Jonas Lopez. So I'm not sure who wants to speak first or come on up and welcome. Thank you all for being here. And I just will say to the board, we're invested and committed to continuing this journey, expanding not only this, but other opportunities for our students. And I think after you hear our teacher and our student, you'll know why this is so important.
Good evening, board members. First off, I'd like to thank Mr. Aguilar and the Mount Whitney Administration Team who selected me as a teacher to teach the Introduction to Cloud Computing course at Arizona State University. Arizona State has partnered with the Equity Lab to help districts across the country give the opportunity to students to enroll in college level courses while still attending high school. This program provides students the exposure to what they will experience at the college level. All their assignments are hard deadlines. Every Thursday, they zoom with their teacher assistant who lectures their week's readings and guides students through their assignments. The students at Mount Whitney High School are networking with other high schools across the country. So during their Zoom calls on Thursdays, they zoom with other high schools in New York City. There is an online discussion board every week where the students are given prompts to write about and make comments to each other's posts. On my part, Equity Lab has four professional developments where I meet with teachers all across the country who are teaching this course as well. What we talk about is what is working in our classrooms and what are some challenges we are facing. While attending these professional developments, we are able to hear feedback from the three professors from Arizona State who have built this course for our students. The students at Mount Whitney High School have been waking up every morning to attend a seven twenty AM pre-first class and are actively engaged throughout the whole course. I am excited to see the long-term impact with National Equity Lab and Arizona State will have on our students. Here with me tonight is Emmanuel Santa Cruz, who will be sharing his experience so far in this course.
Good evening, board members. My name is Emmanuel Santa Cruz and today I will be informing you on my experience so far with the ongoing seven weeks so far with Amazon Web Services and ASU courses. To begin with, the main focus point of this course is to prepare all students at Mount Whitney taking the course to be able to take as well as pass a final exam, which will, if done, will grant us a certificate from AWS with basically certifying us from Amazon, saying that we as Amazon certify them to be able to operate, use the cloud and the cloud-based and a cloud-based environment, whether it's security or programming or setting up a virtual environment. To do this, some things we have, we have learned in this course is different, different cybersecurity attacks such as a distributed denial of service or DDoS as well as phishing scams. We've learned how to identify these attacks, how these attacks are usually correlated, the purpose for these attacks and how to combat as well. Some other things we have learned is the differences between an IPv4 IP address as well as an IPv6 IP address, as well as the differences between not just the difference between those two IP addresses, but what the numbers mean and how they correlate to where that a web ad, a web, a website's going or a game's going, for example. Furthermore, other things we have also learned is how binary is used in computers. So how computers are able to communicate with just the basics ones and zeros, how they're able to transmit grand, grand things like such as your guys' web slideshow, how it's able to transmit that from ones and zeros to that. So we have able to learn how a certain number of bits is able to represent a even bigger number with just a basic number such as five bits. This, this has, this has been a great experience for me, not only because I'm taking a college course as a high school student, but because it has allowed me to learn further into the cybersecurity industry, which is something that I have been interested in since my, since my joining with Mount Whitney's Computer Science Academy. Has opened the doors for me to get an insight that it's not just, you're not just examining the code on the screen. You're not looking for errors. You're not looking for a virus attack. You're looking on how to further support us, further support a server, how to further add protection to it, how to how, how to be able to prevent or even be prepared for attacks of different, different manners and how to identify and execute them if ever needed. It has also given me the ability to refine and learn better habits such as time management, such as communication, as well as it's given me the opportunity to learn college course materials that I would have never learned beforehand, such as how to use Canvas, textbook readings and all that. This course has been really fun for me and very exciting and I cannot wait to finish and continue with it. This course I would definitely recommend for students that are interested, all the students taking it, I know for sure are happy and are excited every day. We're learning something new and overall, I am excited to take the exam. Thank you for your time.
And, and you don't hear very often that someone's excited to take an exam. And so Assistant Superintendent Thompson, Natalie Garza, the area administrator and Principal Aguilar and I had a chance to visit the class a couple of weeks ago, speak with the teacher and students and just hear about all the different reasons they were taking this class. Whether or not there were a few actually in there that aren't part of that academy pathway, right? Where we're interested in it. And so not only does this certification open up doors, but also as, as he mentioned, the things you learn about time management, right? You've got six assignments or however many that is due on Thursday. The teachers there helping, right? But, but the ownership's on you. And I think there are how many student nineteen, eighteen students in this class? And there, you talk about almost a hundred percent attendance. And so it just goes to show when you find engaging things that are connected and relevant to students, how well they'll excel. And so before I continue with the spotlight, does the board have any questions for our teacher or student here?
I, I just want to thank you both for speaking. I know we actually got to visit your classroom, I think a couple of weeks ago. And so seeing the learning in action, the excitement on students' faces. And the fact that this is a pre-first offering, right? So students are taking that self-motivation, that initiative, really excited about how you all are also opening doors for other students and other potential offerings in the future. So just thank you so much for taking time to share your experience. I know it can be a little nerve wracking standing at a podium, but I think you did an excellent job. So thank you.
Yeah, just thank you for coming and sharing and after you get your degree, come back and work for us.
All right. Thank you all very much for being here tonight. Continuing our spotlight. On March twenty-second, over a hundred VUSD students and over fifty healthcare professionals came together for something called Doc Band. It was a roundtable dinner. Several board members, myself included, had a chance to attend this event taking place at the Lamp lighter Inn. The goal is really twofold. Give high achieving juniors an opportunity to network with healthcare professionals and then to return and serve in our community. So we heard firsthand from a doctor who and, and the journey that she went on in her life and how she's returned and giving back to the valley. And this is, you know, we had the doctors, the professionals, optometrist, healthcare, nutrition, just all of these important individuals within our community. Quite a few of them, when I ask how many are from Visalia or the community, raise their hand, right? And so this is a great event for our students to know, not only is healthcare an amazing industry, profession that you can go in, but why don't you go in and come back and contribute back to your hometown? And so it was a great opportunity for those students. Growing our own through induction, a huge shout out. We had more teachers than we had positions that have been coming and wanting to join Visalia Unified. We had over nineteen single subject, multiple subject teachers sign contracts or letters of intent with VUSD. And I don't know if it's in the spotlight, but I do see several of our members of our induction and pathway team here today. And they just went through what's certification. I'm thinking, is that the right word? Certification of their, of the work that we do. Not every district provides these opportunities within the district. Sometimes people have to go out, they have to find it on their own to get their clear credential or, you know, I'm losing my, I don't know, all the fancy California terms, right? But I'm working. But the point being, this was a lot of work. This team, I think, had been working on this recertification for over a year. And so I know a couple of you are in here, just stand up really quick so we can give you a quick round of applause. And of course, or one person in here and, and led by Ben Dillon. And while I'm on that subject, when it comes to accreditation and re-accreditation, you know, we also have several schools, Sequoia and Redwood. I think both of their principals happen to be here tonight. Wait, wave your hand because you just led your schools through re-accreditation certification. Not on the spotlight, but I'm just getting carried away, right? Because we have so many, but and you know, I, I didn't realize before coming here, just the amount of work that it takes to do that in California, over a year of planning for all of these individuals. And so just a huge shout out to all of them. So congratulations. And then of course, continuing social media, we've highlighted lots of big things have happened this month from National School Social Worker Week, our nutrition staff program, several of us had breakfast, right? It was National Breakfast Month. And did you know, by the way, we serve over a million breakfasts every school year? So shout out to our team. The orange was really good that morning. As you can see, he's eating it. Eric and I had one as well when we ate lunch there with the kids. I think we were at Global Learning. Breakfast, sorry, yes, for that. I mean, you know, breakfast, lunch, it's important. They're all good. And then of course, spotlight on Women's History Month and a huge shout out to the women that are on our Board of Education as well, showing both public service and doing so with with amazing grace and style. And so I just want to say, in the last two weeks, we've highlighted Women's History Month via our website, social media challenge, social media channels. You saw a highlight of a couple of our students. I think there was another highlight that was out today or yesterday of a, of a student that's in a non-traditional pathway. And so just, you know, very proud to recognize Women's History Month. And then as we continue, maintenance worker appreciation. Thank you to our teams. Wanted to put this in here because as everybody remember, I mean, we're having more rain now and more coming. I think we're just in this cycle and then you know, but last week or two weeks ago, when, you know, there was a lot of uncertainty, right? The, the reservoir was full and we weren't sure how much water was going to come down. I know I was in contact with Leslie and the city, Leslie Cabala, the city manager and that team at least multiple times a day. One of the days, our conversation started at three thirty in the morning. Just monitoring and trying to make decisions that are right for our community. But all throughout that, all of this team, many of them on Eric's team, had to go into some different roles. And whether it was over by Willow Glen, you know, helping rake out the, anything that was blocking that waterway to whatever it might, they might need to do. They just poured their heart and soul into making sure our buildings were safe and we were able to keep our schools open. I'm very proud to say, you know, we did have to cancel a few activities here and there, but we did not have to close our schools. And we know how important it is to our community, our healthcare workers, our police, our firefighters, our business people, that our schools are open so that kids are in a safe place so that they can work. And so very thankful to our principals, our leaders and our teachers as well for doing everything that they could in those few weeks to make sure that we could keep our schools open. And I do believe as we close out our meeting, we do have a little video that we want to show in recognition of Women's History Month.
As we celebrate Women's History Month, we must recognize the invaluable contributions of women in education. For generations, women have been shaping the minds of our youth as dedicated educators, passionate For generations, women have been shaping the minds of our youth as dedicated educators, passionate mentors and inspiring leaders. They have still knowledge, values and the love of learning in countless students, helping them reach their full potential. But their contributions to education don't end there. Today, women are leading the way in many fields from finance to IT, police officers to graphic designers and more. They are breaking barriers, overcoming challenges and achieving great things. Let us celebrate women's achievements and support their endeavors. Let us inspire our students to follow their footsteps, to dream big and to reach for the stars. Because when we empower women, we empower our entire community. Happy Women's History Month from Visalia Unified School District.
In here for any questions?
Any questions or comments? All right, let's move on to six point two, our commitment to student learning, theory of action. Um, theory of action for change. This is a second read. Superintendent Shrum.
So Madam President, board members, uh, really excited to be here tonight to share for our second read approval and hopeful approval of a very important policy addition, our theory of action. And given the time and, and all of that, I'm not gonna, uh, elongate this report unnecessarily, except to say, you know, it's important, right? The role of the district is to create the conditions for the superintendent, the district team and school sites to ultimately be successful. You've seen that circle chart before. And our board spent a lot of time saying, here's what we believe and we're committed to doing. And so now we've been on a journey, right? Is it possible to have all kids learn at high levels? Our board in the beliefs and commitments says it is. Now we're on a journey to how do we make sure that becomes reality? We know that isn't the reality that every student, teacher or other person experiences in our district. And so how do we get there? And so as a board, we've worked a lot on what the role of effective school governance team is to set the conditions, right? To determine what's possible. And then the district determines how we do that. And one of the key policies that we needed to make that happen was the theory of action where our board stamps. This is what we want to see in our district. And now district staff, your job is to make it happen. And I won't read the whole draft again, but you will see in here certain things around what we expect. Professional learning communities, recognizing all students are unique, high quality instructional materials. You'll notice there isn't measurement or other pieces in here, and that's because that will come when we have the strategic plan. The strategic plan will then take this and define it as a board, you'll set actionable goals. That isn't part of this is again, still saying what we want to see. Um, and the board talks about in here, we must have high quality professionally trained workforce, accountability, coaching and feedback, uh, decisions on staffing based on data and student need. Uh, talks about resources and you can see those things in here. This is an important policy, but I think of everything that's in here, you'll see also welcoming, accessible, experience a sense of safety, significance and belonging. When we do those things, kids will learn, right? It's creating the conditions for kids to learn. But what the most powerful part I think of the theory of action here is, is how it ends. The board declares that these actions must occur to ensure the success of each and every student in Visalia Unified School District. I think that is a powerful statement and a call to action, hence the theory of action. And so that concludes my second read and I recommend that the board approve, uh, this, uh, theory of action to be part of our philosophy. Uh, this will become board policy. I don't have the number in front of me, uh, part of our, um, board policies. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Is there any public comment? Any board comment or questions? All right, um, do I have a motion to accept? Oh, I'm sorry. Did you have a question?
No, I moved that we adopt this.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, on a motion by board member Belt, second by board member Casebeers Saleno, call for the vote.
Student Board Representative votes yes and motion passes unanimously with one absent.
Agenda item six point three, twenty twenty-three, twenty-four summer school and school year preview. Superintendent Shrum.
All right. Well, if you weren't tired of me, I've got one more, uh, report in me, uh, tonight. And this also, well, first of all, I do want to say thank you for the theory of action. Um, you know, I know how important it is to teachers, uh, to our parents, to our students to know exactly with clarity, what is it we expect in our district? Um, and I know that that may not have been always the case, but this board has worked tirelessly since I've been here to make sure that we are clear about our expectations and that we create the conditions that that does become, uh, the reality in our schools. We know the enormity of the work ahead to make that reality. We've got a lot of work, uh, but we don't know what work to engage in if we don't declare what we want to see, right? And that's what's so important about that policy. So thank you for giving me, uh, that extra moment there. Um, it is the end of, I don't know, I think we're in March still, right? It is, it is the last week of March, right? We have spring break next week. And although we're excited about that and finishing strong this year, the work for twenty-three, twenty-four has been underway for months now, right? We start a school year and we're already in planning for the next school year. And that's just the cycle of how things go. On our continuing journey to make sure our core beliefs and commitments become the reality across our district. So I did want to tonight for our board and for our community to just share a little bit about what people can expect for our teachers and for others as we look to finishing this year strong and then preparing to enter a new school year. So want to begin with summer opportunities. Again, we have some great opportunities for our students that will be coming this summer. Much of this information you're going to see in this report will be detailed further. We'll have parent releases. You know, information coming home, all those sorts of things, informational websites, you know, all of that is, as the details fine tune. But there will be summer opportunities for our students in our elementary grades, uh, in June, uh, through daily program. And this will be both academic, uh, and also, uh, enrichment as well. Our heart pro youth program, just like it has been the past few years, will be available throughout the day. So students may choose to enter the summer school programming and then make it a full day by staying in the, in the pro youth heart program in the afternoon. They may just need childcare in the summer and not need the summer program, and of which case they can be in the pro youth heart program, you know, for the summer. Uh, middle school, you'll see there will run about twenty-four days, uh, along with a middle school bridge to help prepare students for middle school. ELA and math support for students that need additional support. And again, edge pro youth programming for our students in the afternoon. At our high school, again, opportunities for credit recovery and advancement, uh, focusing on incoming ninth and eleventh grade students. Again, edge pro youth pro, uh, programing available. And of course, our extended school year opportunities for special ed students, uh, will run throughout the summer and you can see the dates as well. And again, uh, through IEP meetings and other sorts of things, these opportunities will be shared, uh, with families as applicable. And again, for our other families, more information, uh, on summer will be forthcoming. You've heard us talk a lot about extended learning opportunity programming and, uh, you know, a huge lift developing a program from nothing, right? This is, I mean, what, a year, maybe two? Um, and already what, uh, the team here in Visalia has done is turning heads across the state. They're now being sought out by other districts. Uh, what are you doing in Visalia? We see and we're hearing this. How'd you do it? So a huge shout out to, um, our ELOP team, um, and of course Andy DeMayo as well for leading that group. Currently planned for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we have art and dance classes, STEM coding, Makerspace, soccer track, basketball. Uh, we are partnering with community-based organizations for things like reading, uh, revolution and quest. And we're also exploring some other unique opportunities to add to what we already have planned for this upcoming fall, theater productions, multicultural dance, instrumental music classes, Lego robotics clubs, medical exploration and increasing middle school programming options. And remember expanded learning opportunity, elementary and then middle. And so now because we have such a firm foundation in elementary, we're able to continue to grow elementary, but also expand things into our middle school. So we're really excited about the work of that team. And there are already great things, uh, you might've seen this past weekend. For example, they have weekend field trips by different clusters. And I'm not sure which cluster was this past weekend, but they went to see how honey is produced, right? And they went to a honey farm. And so this is about giving students experiences that they would not otherwise have. And you know, when students have experiences, they suddenly see a world that they didn't know existed before. And that's really the mission of what Andy and his team is doing. And so excited to see this continue to grow. Now, when it comes to additional school year changes, there are a few I want to talk about and mention. First, through proposition twenty-eight, we're excited that now and, and other funding sources, we're going to be able to expand some opportunities to our TK through third grade students, which will include weekly, physical education, art and music. So now certificated employees will now, now be delivering that instruction and that lifts off the plate of the classroom teacher. Also, because of this and, and working with our labor partners, we're working to make sure we have a streamlined elementary school day. Where all of our elementary schools will have the same start and end time for every student, the whole entire school, right? So there won't be two staggered dismissals. There'll be one dismissal for families. And so we're excited about that, the convenience that will bring to families. And that is because to ensure planning time and instruction time with the addition of art, music and PE in the primary grades, we're able to do that. And again, as soon as we, uh, land on those times, we'll be sure to communicate that out with families. A second dual immersion site. We know this is an extremely popular program currently housed at Mountain View Elementary School, and I think, uh, it's expanding to second grade or already in second K. It's in K through two, expanded. Next year, K through two, K through one, right now, had the opportunity to visit those classes, um, as well. And just seeing what's interesting. If you watch the journey of the students, uh, by the time now they're getting to late first grade, you see this blossoming of language, right? Because of the work of the dual immersion. And we know students who are bilingual and have those skills way outperform their peers later on, uh, not to mention, um, the skills that they will, they will gain. And so we know this is popular. We're excited that we'll be expanding to a second site. If you are a parent of a, of a up and coming kindergarten student and you're interested in that, you can visit our website. And there's a link to further information about how you, uh, can apply to be part of that program. Um, extended, we mentioned ELOP extended day, extended school year opportunity, extracurricular activities, focusing on strengthening the foundation and advancing academic opportunities for students. I'll talk a little bit more about what that means in a minute. And then for our parents out there, you're going to be happy about this one. Uh, online volunteer management system. So currently you have to fill out paperwork, as I understand it, everywhere you want to volunteer, right? It's redundant. It takes extra time. It's really just a hassle. Uh, thanks to Ben and the human resources team, they're working on automating that. So you may have kids at multiple schools, but you're not going to have to go through that paperwork multiple times. And so more information to come on that, but I think our parents are really going to appreciate that. And we're going to continue to work to advance our systems, especially around power school. Um, because there are a lot of efficiencies within that system that we don't currently utilize that creates additional burden on families. And so part of the work of the district team is to make sure we're using our systems to their full effective, effective potential. And safety and security, many of these things are familiar because board, you invested in them this year and we began planning for implementation. What is new for twenty-three, twenty-four is you'll start to see the full implementation of these systems, right? That right now may only be in pilot stage or, or some other thing. So Raptor, our visitor management and staff emergency system. Our Alice, we talked about our ongoing safety training, active shooter training, expanding to students. Transfender, this is our transportation system with the app. So scanning a student when they get on or off, right? So we know they're at the right stop. How many parents have had to call a school and say, my kid didn't get off at the right stop? We don't know where they are. Well, now that won't happen, right? Cause when they scan, oh, this isn't your stop. Or we'll, we'll know where they are, right? If the bus is late, it will notify parents of that information as well. So you don't have to stand out in the rain. If the bus is going to be a little bit late, right? Cause now we have rain. And then the Verkata system, right? Single point of camera entry and door entry system. This is going to expand to every single site. So if I'm working the front desk, I, you know, now we don't have to have just open access, right? The parent can buzz. Front desk can make sure it's the right person, buzz you in that sort of thing. So, and not to mention the safety that comes with that. So again, all of these are systems that we are investing in, but will continue to hopefully bring to full fruition uh, by August. And we'll keep the board updated on the implementation of how things are going. Enrollments underway, pre-K kindergarten, all of those things. Visit online for information. And also if you need help, all you have to do is call the district office and they'll help direct you. Our family and community resource center stands ready to help families with anything they might need to be prepared to start the school year. And a key question, you know, that as we go through our planning and some of you might've seen this quote before, um, that we think about is are we making sure we're preparing our students and staff to be successful? Think about this for a minute. The illiterate of the twenty-first century will not be those who cannot read and write, but those who cannot learn, unlearn and relearn. Think about in just these past few months, the new words and terms that we have learned that we didn't even know existed a year or so ago, unless you're in the computer science pathway program, right? You might've known. Things like chatbot, artificial intelligence, right? What does that mean for teaching? What does that mean for whether kids see what we're doing in the classroom is relevant anymore, right? We, they don't need us to be the holders of knowledge. They have Google chatbot, whatever it might be, right? What our kids need is to us, for us to help them develop critical thinking skills. How to learn, unlearn and relearn again, right? How to look at this information and determine what's real? What's not real? All of those sorts of skills that are going to help them be successful. What does this mean then? For what teaching and learning looks like, right? These are all things we have to talk about and face not only as, as Visalia Unified, but as a nation as well. To start us on that journey. Kind of a theme, if you will, of next year is going to be about strengthening the foundation and advancing academic enrichment opportunity. Cause it's not just about bringing kids up to speed, but what about those kids that are accelerated? And how we're growing them as well. That's why you see both the foundation and the enrichment as part of our focus. We're going to focus on quality first instruction, authentic student learning. Are kids engaged in the learning? You just heard an example of what that sounds like when that's happening in a classroom. How do we make every student tell that story? Right? That, that's what that means right there. Effective professional learning teams to ensure academic success. This is about empowering our teachers. This district has done PLCs before. But I think when you talk to teachers or talk to others, did we do it? And did we do it well? Or did we just do it? And have a training and then that was the last we talked about it, right? This is about investing in making sure we do this right. So that our teachers really are empowered to make instructional decisions for their students and their class courses. I heard this almost this third bullet really, um, I want to say it was really one of my first listening sessions when I came into Visalia. And I had a parent come up to me and talk about gifted and talented and some other things. And I was like, well, I'm sure we have a great program. Let me look into it and I'll get back to you. Um, only to find out that that, that wasn't really something that existed in anymore. And so one of the things that we know we have to do is continue to explore advanced learning opportunities. We're going to start with our elementary age students. So we're going to be entering a phase of kind of study, look at other systems, look at other districts, talk to parents, talk to teachers, talk to students. If we're going to build a program, let's build a program that is effective, that is engaging and that does what it's intended to do, right? Not, but you know, we, these are great programs if they're done right. They can lead to unintentional outcomes if they're not done carefully. And so uh, we're going to position our district to really began to begin to look into, how do we provide advanced learning opportunities for our students? There are teachers in our district that do things along these lines right now, but it's on their own, right? Or maybe it's a school initiative. It's not district wide, right? What if every student is in a poetry club? What if every student is in a spelling bee opportunity, those sorts of things, right? How do we coordinate and create those opportunities? What about design thinking? For our elementary students, right? There are some unique and amazing things that we can do as we explore that. You heard one example of continuing dual enrollment. Want to mention this one. Our board has been very clear, we need to do better with our counseling and support services for our students. We've heard that from our parents as well. We're going to continue that work, making sure our counselors are certified, uh, at the highest, you know, level possible. And one of those things we want to make And one of those things we want to make sure is that every student has a post-secondary plan. And I don't mean a post-secondary plan. I'm going to graduate. I mean, I'm going to graduate and I'm going to go to College Sequoia. No, no. Why are you going to College Sequoia? Is it to get an industry certification? Is it to get two years, save some money and go to a four-year institution? Are you entering a career? Are you going to be Amazon web-based cloud certified, right? That you can go into a job, right? We have to set that up for kids. And so our counseling team is going to be working on that. And I want to mention too, that. When we talk about counselors, building plans. We're talking about counselors, building plans for every kid. It doesn't matter if I'm a special ed kid or not. Every kid. Will have a plan. Investment and commitment to math, one K through two literacy and phonics. You heard us talk about that. I'm also excited about this one. I've heard from teachers and others across our district. What can we do to recognize students who meet certain benchmarks, right? And so we're going to add. School site funds for academic enrichment recognition. So this is things like. Honor Society, National Honor Society, Beta Club, right? Those sorts of things where students have reached a certain level based on their academic attainment. Worthy of certain recognitions, right? And so we're going to provide some site funds to our schools. So that they can support these initiatives on their campuses. Another thing that's really important and you know. We know coming out of COVID, we're seeing more and more academic, more and more behavioral concerns in our students. And we know that and we've got to find ways to equip our teachers. To address that, right? Because the answer will never be that kid doesn't belong here. We'll be very clear about that. But we have to find how we can make them successful. And where do they belong within our system so that they can be most successful? So we're going to continue to work on building behavioral support environments for our students, particularly our elementary students. So that they can access their learning environment. Maybe they need some therapeutic work. Maybe they need some behavior replacement. How do we do that? And then help integrate them back into the learning environment. One of the things we've heard from our sites and from others, we know we have work to do to ensure consistency and clarity. Of our academic and student support services, counseling and response to behavior. So one of the things that we've tasked the district team with is creating clear process. When a student is identified as having academic or behavioral need. What are the expectations of the classroom teacher? What are the expectations of support staff on site? Essentially putting that in a flow chart that's transparent and visible. So everyone will know what to do, what the supports are, where a student might be in that continuum. And so then we're inviting people into the process to help be part of the solution. When we do things like that. And so that work is underway and we'll be ready for August. And then one Visalia connected. Really, at the end of the day. This is what we have to be focused on. If we connect students, make meaningful connections, know them by name, greet them at the door. I know that sounds really simplistic, but when you greet a student at the door. You change their trajectory for that class and that day by that one act. That takes all of a minute. Maybe two, if you have thirty kids in your class, right? But the point being, we also have to come to the table. And be part of the solution for the challenges we face, right? Each one of us. And so with one Visalia connected, we're going to continue these partnerships. With our community, with our teachers, with our staff to create these opportunities for kids to be connected. I want to. You know, and, and we just mentioned some ways there, right? We have retired teachers in our community. Why don't you come up to lunch and sit with a kid and let them read to you while they eat, right? There are so many ways. We can connect and our kids can be connected that will change trajectories, right? We've just got to create the systems and the processes for the people. To connect to that. Want you to hear this board. I don't have a slide on this, but, but this just tells you why this is so important. At one of our, we've done some work, right? Looking at GPAs, looking at attendance and other things of kids that are connected. VAPA, I'm in a club, I'm in something else, right? And I knew, because we know research shows it makes a difference. I was floored. When I saw some of the, our own data. And this is rough data. We, we found other things we need to add into it, which will only make it even further. Show how, how this important this is. So when it comes to the grade point average. Of students who were engaged at one middle school versus not engaged. The average GPA of the student that was engaged was a little over three point one. Students not engaged, two point eight. When it comes to. Number of failed classes. Students that were engaged had half. The number of failed classes of students who were not engaged. Half. When it comes to discipline, major discipline, these are major infractions, right? Half. Students who were engaged, half as many. As students who were unengaged. And I have. Attendance and all those other things as well, which further just shows that. So when we're talking about how do we find solutions? Solutions are engagement. Solutions are connections. Solutions are asking our community to find ways to help us engage with every one of our students. Because when they're engaged. All of the indicators move in the right direction. And what that also does is that allows us to concentrate resources on those few that really. Do need intensive support. Because right now we're having to provide resources in a lot of places. And if we work on connectivity, if we work on engagement, if we work on the foundation. Then we can narrow and really have a greater impact on students. That really, really need that and that may not respond to some of those things. And then finally, preparing for the future of Visalia twenty thirty, community-driven blueprint for the future. This work is underway. We're now at the phase of narrowing down the questions that we're going to be using when we come out to the community. And so after spring break, we'll be beginning those engagement sessions. And so we're excited about being able to begin to announce. Come out and start engaging our community, our staff, our teachers, our parents, our students. Will all be part of those groups. And so we're excited about what Visalia twenty thirty will do for the future of Visel Unified. So. Board, that was a very long report. But there's a lot of work and I think a lot of times people don't realize, well, you know, what are folks doing? Are they, do they know these things? Are they working on it? And so I think it was worth taking. A little bit of extra time tonight to really detail. Some of these things so that people know. What our direction is and where we're going as we talk about finishing strong. This summer and next school year. So Madam President, that concludes my report, but I'll remain available for any questions or comments the board may have.
Any comments or questions from the board?
I just want to say thank you. You know, I look at our theory of action and our vision and we've tasked you with a lot. And just hearing all the things that you're putting together, I just want to say. Thank you to our teachers, our staff for the time that you've committed to try to get us to. What the board has asked, and that is our students are successful, they're connected and we show progress. And. With that, just thank you.
Anybody else? I, I. I too would like to thank you. I was reading this last night. And I was quite overwhelmed. And excited about what's happening. So again, I want to say thank you to you Superintendent Schrum, your staff, teachers. Site principals, areas. I mean, I could, I know I'm missing people, but this is amazing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And now we're going to have another amazing report. Six point four, Proposition twenty eight, expansion of VAPA programs, Mr. Thompson.
And I'll first of all, take a deep breath, right? I know you guys have been sitting for a while. So good evening, President, good morning. Board members. Superintendent Schrum. Community and mostly staff. Thank you guys for being here tonight. I'm really excited about this one. Because first of all, I want to say our community invested in us. And that's what today's about is to tell them what we're doing with the investment they have done. So. Again, Prop twenty eight, expansion of VAPA programming. Again, our core values, obviously we want to provide high levels and demonstrate continuous growth. And also create environments that are innovative and improve student outcomes. Which I'm just going to start off by saying, as we had the choir in here today. If you don't see the empowerment in the students there, I don't know where you see it. To be able to stand up before folks and be able to sing. And to put yourself out there in that fashion says a lot and it, it's, it's important. In the singing, but it also translates into the classroom. And it translates into life and that encouragement, that confidence that they build and to grow. So just excited to share this. So art and music in schools funding, this is a quick, just. A follow-up from last time we did talk about this. Funds must be used to supplement and not supplant. So this is addition to. Added on, this is not to replace anything or replace funding. So it's all on increasing opportunities. It does require an annual expenditure plan, which we have. It'll come back to you guys as we keep expending. Throughout this process and the really it's focused on staffing and then it targets in on the students served with that staffing. Part of the certification annually is eighty percent of the funds will go to certificated or classified staff. So again, this is really a funding model, one that it's ongoing and it's focused on hiring people. To provide quality additional services to our students in the VAPA world. Budget breakdown, looks something like this. Personnel salaries and benefits, we're looking at about four million out of the five million dollar pot that we have coming to us. Instructional materials, supplies. And contracted services is a point eight million. And then new and replacement equipment is about two million. You also will be familiar that in the past, we had the block grant and other things that also supplemented. And also even before that, you made a commitment even before that, where we put about a million dollars into immediate needs. That we had in our VAPA programs, making sure that all of our students had instruments, students weren't waiting for things and those type things. This is now above and beyond. As we continue to invest and commit to VAPA. So. We came to you guys actually, and before I run through this, we came to you. Earlier, I believe it was in January and asking to request. For us to get this out and get out in front. We know every state or every district in the state got some type of funding. And just wanted to report back, first of all, because of that commitment to start early. It provided us the opportunity for, for our human resources team to really get out front and really excited as. One of our concerns we had is making sure we had enough staffing to do this. And right now we're looking at very strong pools of candidates. We're beginning to hire and we're, we're. Very optimistic that we are going to get there before day one, as we're doing several hirings right now. But we just want to say thank you for that forward thinking. And as we developed that, because it did allow us to get out in front and to get some really quality candidates that we're working through. Also allowed some of our own teaching staff to reorganize a bit. So that they're targeting into their sweet spot of where they're teaching and that, that kind of reinvigoration of. A new opportunity for them to invest in students' lives in a different capacity. In other places, which we've seen many of them take advantage of that as well. So gathering information, we shared similar to this last time, but really. We brought on our director, Dan Bishop, and his whole goal and purpose here. To start off, since he hit the ground running, his ninety day plan that he's submitted to me and Mr. Schrum right off was. I gotta go out there to every place, to every person and talk to them, see what their program in and what it looks like. If you've gone to an Avapa event, most likely you've seen them somewhere there, talking to people, looking around, seeing what's going on. And just trying to get to know everything that we're doing in our district, what's working, what teachers are sharing, maybe isn't working. So that way we can adjust. And so that's been a constant. Process for him all year long this year. So because of that, he's been determining needs, requests. And current and future barriers that we're seeing in our system. Regular visits with all VAPA programs and performances to understand our offerings. And also to meet with current staff to determine strengths and interests for the twenty three, twenty four school year. Now, that's been a process. It's been an ongoing process as we declared that last time. He's been doing that since that because we want to keep it going and keeping it fresh and updating because we don't want to miss anything or leave anyone out. Most importantly, not leave out a program that our students can access and that would, that would improve their and enrich their education. Prop twenty eight, Prop twenty eight will provide elementary students this upcoming year, all TK third students will receive art and classroom music one time per week. So by teachers that are committed and targeted to those specific subjects. Fifth and sixth grade choir pullout program will be added to all elementary sites. This is new. We have not had that in the past. As we see these students here, they had started at later times in their, in their career, but can you imagine? If they started in fifth and sixth grade and they start building that love then, it's going to be bigger and it's going to be amazing. We had to also purchase some curriculum to support our teachers in TK six spotlight on music and voices in concert. And this is a McGraw Hill, but we're, obviously there's an investment there in curriculum. So our teachers are prepared and have what they need. Ongoing funding for elementary art supplies and new choral music curriculum at every site. Again. Giving them the tools that they need to be able to teach those opportunities that we have art and classroom music. So that's what elementary looks like. For this upcoming year. Again, we know we have a very robust four through sixth grade program already that's staying in place. The choir is in addition to. It's an additional opportunity for students. Prop twenty eight will provide middle school students with a full-time choir companies. And also additional stipends to provide other opportunities for after-school support. Again, voices in concert and curriculum for fifth through eighth. And then that's going to help, as you can see, it's consistent curriculum. But the vision is so that it articulates through different grade levels. So we're actually matriculating up, right? And that's the goal. So we can continue to plan. And, and put students on pass to, to be outstanding and have years and years of, of support there. New dance program opportunities. So that will be offered at the middle school level, meaning at each site that they will have more opportunities for dancing. And different types. I'll get into that in a second, but we do have a divide of a teacher between De Visitero. And Mount Wendy that we are going to have folklorical dancing that will be provided through that feeder. And that's something that we're piloting there and kind of seeing where that goes with it, but excited about that program. Bands and strings, we're into a team teaching, assistant teachers for all secondary schools. And then middle school additional beginning strings class and marching band support staff. You might ask the question, why increase staffing? Like this. The reality is we have robust programs already going on, but the reality is with one teacher, it's difficult to get to all students. And so by adding additional staffing, how we're expanding is we're allowing, we can have more students in there that are going to get more direct access. To supports and teachers, because it's not easy to run a whole band or a whole strings department and you have fifty, sixty, eighty students in there and it's you. Having some more people that are focused and targeted in on specific areas is going to allow them to better serve our students and to provide a more robust. Opportunities for our students to keep engaging and learning in their music. High school. Again, because we've had robust programs here, we are adding team teaching for band and string programs, just like I said before in the elementary. Additional support for marching bands. Again, this provides students with more access to additional instructors. That maybe are targeted in specifically on drum line or specifically into brass or in, in different areas that they can target in on. And those additional hands can work closely with students and give them more support. Again, I shared with you the halftime teacher at Mount Wendy. This is in addition to, they already have a dance program that's very robust there. This is in addition to. Adding more opportunities for dance at sites. Additional budget support for all district teachers and programs. So you might ask the question, well. Our VAPA teachers have worked hard and we're not want to negate the work that they're already doing and the things that they want to do. Many of them have. Ideas of how they can expand programming in their own and they need to have honestly a bit of funding to help that. So every single VAPA. Teacher will have an opportunity to have some funding that they're able to utilize. To support their program and to build the program out, which is something that is newer that we haven't always had. New kilns and ongoing maintenance of kilns, again for ceramics. Obviously it's no help if they're not functioning well, or you don't have enough to be able to, you know, prepare the pottery appropriately. And then modernized outdated band equipment, equipment, theater sound and lighting equipment. Again, talking about LJ, talking about Eldia Monte, talking about. Providing, making sure that we have our sound and quality and lighting up to par so that we can continue to build. Our theater programs and make sure they have what they need to be successful there. Along with this, Prop twenty eight will provide, because we also know there's been about little over a million dollars worth of equipment. Of instruction of instruments that have been purchased and there's an ongoing maintenance of what we purchased, right? So there's additional need for repair technicians to service additional equipment needs. Additional equipment and materials in the instrument shop and increased operational budgets. So again. In Viso Unified, we have sometimes very unique is actually we. We fix a lot of our own equipment. We fix students' equipment that's not even ours as we work with them. Because the reality is the faster we turn around, the faster the instrument gets back in the student's hands, the more they're able to practice and stay engaged. Worst thing you could do is take it and the saxophone is not working and four months later it finally gets back to you. That student might've lost some interest. They have not been able to participate. They have not been able to participate in their band program. So it's essential that we're able to get. The instrument gets broken, we can get one back in their hands so they can continue to engage in their class. Um, transportation of instruments back and forth from sites. This is going to take a burden off of our teachers who currently are transporting a lot of the instruments back and forth, uh, to make sure their students have what they need. So actually being systematic and, and a process. So we have it. So it's timely getting back to sites. And then Destiny, which is an asset management program, which we use for libraries, you might be familiar with in our library system. But actually the barcode, so we can keep good track of instruments and where they go. And also keep an asset management system in place. So we have clarity of what we're doing and where they're going. So that concludes my report. Again, I wanted to share, this is ongoing monies. I just want to give a big shout out to our taxpayers because at the end of the day, they committed to this, they put this out there and this is an opportunity for us. Uh, to honestly. Give our students additional opportunities and also that we're faithful and good stewards to our taxpayers. That have put these in our hands. We want to show them that we are doing meaningful change and providing additional opportunities for our students in this district. So I'll stake any questions and we'll take them at this time.
Any comments or questions from the board, Mr. Vegas?
Uh, thank you, President Gomoyen. Uh, huge shout out and, uh, thanks to our director of VAPA, Dan Bishop. When Mark talked about him being everywhere, he meant him being everywhere. I ran into him at the Tuesday. Uh, night showcase at Golden West last week and he was telling me about all the other events we had planned for that week. So, uh, major thanks to your team. I, I had one question and one sort of, uh, comment. The first, the question is, um. Do we offer any sort of temporary instruments for students whose instruments are being repaired, whether they be in wind, strings, percussion, et cetera? And then, um, my comment was more around, um, I think this plan, um, and all these things we're looking at. Um, I think is a, is a deep reflection of the hard work that has been put in to ensure that we're listening to our staff. Our educators about what are our needs, what are things we can improve? Uh, but one area I think we should look at is, you know. Potentially in the future, since these are going to be ongoing funds, what can we do to survey and maybe have some focus group discussions with students themselves? You know, I, for example, have mentioned several times, um, you know, wanting to bring like a mariachi program to Visalia Unified and that I've seen in other school districts across the state. Um, but I also realize that I'm older and maybe students want something in entirely different direction, right? Um, maybe they would like to have classes around, um, you know, how to use music programs in computers or, you know, different aspects of music, media and, and the industry. Um, that I might not necessarily know what's best. And so I think it would be great. Uh, if in the coming years, we could look at, uh, potentially doing surveys, focus groups or listening sessions to our VAPA students from all across the district. Uh, to find out what their needs and, and wants would be, uh, as well. But I'm very excited about everything we have presented in this plan, um, and moving forward.
Thank you. We will look into that.
Any other questions or comments? I, I'd just like to say thank you, Mr. Bishop. Very excited. We're going to have an amazing school year. Agenda item seven, general public comment, general public comment in any school related topic may be heard at this time. The board asked that any public comment on any item listed on tonight's agenda be addressed at the time that the item comes up for discussion by the board. To comply with the Brown Act, California's open meeting law, board discussion is limited. Um, to items on the agenda, therefore when receiving public comment on items not on the agenda, the board's role is to. Is limited to receiving such comments and the board may not engage in dialogue with the public. The board thanks the public for its participation in public comment and understanding the board's responsibility. Pursuant to board policy, the board may limit individual comments to no more than three minutes and individual topics to twenty minutes. It is recommended you begin your comments by stating your name. Is there any public comment? All right. We'll move on. The consent agenda, would any board member like to pull an item from the consent agenda?
I, I would like to pull enclosure number six.
Okay. Any others? Could I, um, have a motion to accept the remainder of the consent agenda?
On motion.
Second. On a motion by, um, board member Casper Saleno, second by board member Naylor. All in favor.
Student board representative votes yes and motion passes unanimously with one absent.
Uh, Dr. Vegas, enclosure number six.
Thank you, President Gomoyen. Um, as previously done, um, anytime I, or sorry, I have a. Sibling who does business with the district or who works for an employer that does business with the district. And so anytime I see them come up on the agenda, uh, I intentionally abstain to avoid any perception of a conflict of interest. So I'll be abstaining from this item.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept, I enclosure number six?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Okay, on a motion from, uh, board member Naylor, second by Casper Saleno, all in favor.
Student board representative votes yes and motion passes, uh, five with one abstention and one absent.
And now it's time. We have our student, uh, our student representative report, Mr. Fernando Sal, Sal, Saldivar.
Eldia Monte is celebrating Women's History Month with events after school featuring guest speakers and movie night and poetry workshop. Eldia Monte is also sponsoring its annual. Buff ball tournament this week from March twenty-seven through thirty, through the thirty-first. And a championship game at lunch on Friday. Eldia Monte is presenting their production of illuminate on March thirty and thirty-first. Uh, seven P M. At LJ Williams Theater. Golden West Dance held their World of Dance Show on March sixteenth and seventeenth. At the LJ Williams Theater, all of, all of the Golden West Performing Arts Groups. Including choir orchestra and band performed at the CMEA festival performances earlier this month. And each did outstanding. Western Week was a huge success with ma- with mass amounts of school participation and lots of fun for everyone involved. Mount Whitney Choir performed their spring concert of the classics at the LJ Williams Theater. Mount Whitney ASB. Put on their annual muscle ball tournament with all coed teams and a championship. Staff versus student game, Mount Whitney FFA hosted, hosted their annual staff breakfast, delicious breakfast was served. And teachers and staff were able to enjoy their morning together. Redwood held, Redwood held their annual Mister and Mrs. Ranger Week with this year's theme, under the Ranger blue sea. Student participation in the dress up days were outstanding. Redwoods FFA had a successful fundraiser. Donating over one thousand cans of food to the homeless shelter. Redwood recently finished their WASC, uh, acceleration visit and are anxiously awaiting their status. Um, Sequoia quarter, quarter three ended on March seventeenth. With forty-five students meeting graduation status and the pushing year to date total over two hundred students so far. Thank you, Mr. Escobar and Mr. Huerta for helping put together with ASB. Our annual takeover event with live musics, singing car show and great food for our students. Sequoia hosted our open house last Thursday and saw the biggest crowd since before the pandemic. VCIS ASB volunteered at the Miracle League on Saturday, March twenty-fifth. It was a very special and meaningful community service project for. Our ASB students, VCIS will be hosting open house on April twentieth from five thirty to seven for current and new students, including eighth graders. VCIS Performing Arts Department is working hard preparing for the spring show, which will feature performances for our rock band. Vocal performers and advanced acting students. VTEC has started a paddle breeding program on campus and welcomed their first Heffrich calf on March tenth. VTEC hosted their first farm, farm tour days of the year on March twenty-second with around two hundred elementary. School students, approximately sixty-five VTEC students worked the event either as a tour guide or. Through preparing and presenting sixteen student ran educational and hands-on station. VTEC FFA took. Uh, VTEC FFA took nineteen students to, onto Rario for FFA State Leadership Conference where they had two. Voting delegates, uh, one student representative on the quartercy corp, crops. Corpses, sorry, and, uh, competed as the regional winner and. One of only four finalists in California for the National Chapter Award at the state level. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And can we come see the baby calf?
Yes.
Okay, time for board member reports. Let's start with Mr. Belt.
Very good. Thank you. President Gomoyen, I'll try to make this as brief as possible. Uh, reading across America was really fun for all of us. I know that not only did I enjoy being at three different schools that week. But I have a stack of thank you notes from class, uh, first graders that, uh, Mrs. Vander Middens class. They all drew pictures of me with my white hair, um. But they enjoyed sneetches very much. I enjoy going to that PTA presidents and principals luncheon because it gave particularly for myself as a new board member. A good view of as many both PTA presidents and principals all in one place. Um, and I think it also helped continue to bolster how valuable it is for our parents. To be connected to every school possible and, and within every student possible. Eric Kerr and I went to, um, he, actually he met me at six thirty A M. To actually ride a bus because I had requested to be able to, uh, jump onto a bus. We went on bus number five with Mrs. Fleming. And enjoyed seeing what it was like, although. I have to say he was very, um, sidetracked, distracted. Because it was also the beginning of all the flooding stuff that was happening and he was busily, uh, texting back and forth with superintendent Schrum and others that. But to see where she has to meander all over the northeast in order to get her students to their proper school sites. But also gave us a good indication of just what it's like and the safety things that we're concerned about, both for students as well as for a driver. Uh, with that, then we subsequently toured all the transportation department, uh, got to see our new director, Mr. Espinoza. Um, then went to the nutritional department where, uh, literally. The nutritionist Regina Ocampo showed us not only how they do all these meals every day. Uh, but some of the most amazing equipment where they actually that orange juice you were having, they actually can act. Do the juicing of them, the slicing of them, the bagging of them all right there. I didn't realize that we were doing a lot of actual our own packaging as well. Um, new, the right next door to that is the tech services. So Adam Brown filled in for Chuck Boone and took us on a tour of. The amazing backbone that keeps all of our technology working. Uh, and actually saw that there is a building or a building within a building. That makes sure that our system continues to run regardless of what happens to AT&T and others, but, uh, we can't avoid that when that happens, but. And I know that we're now installing such backbones here in the district office so that we have redundancy to make sure the system is really going. And our technology works and our teachers have it and then our students have it. The VTEC fundraiser, um, that I enjoyed going to and actually enjoyed meeting, um, Mrs. Serrato, who was also there with us. Uh, raised thirty-five thousand dollars for the foundation of VTEC. Uh, it was an amazing event at the Ag Center. Uh, also it's all then just a few days later, Mrs. Serrato shared, uh, wonderfully at the PK graduation. Hosted at Golden West, Mr. Lambert and. An amazing number of parents who were so excited to graduate from that program. Understanding and knowing and having equipping to see their students go to college. Uh, I wasn't aware that I was going to be asked to speak, but I, um, I think I gave them some, uh, motivational ideas as I stood and had it translated. Uh, for them to understand this white haired guy. Who also is a first generation college graduate in my family. Yeah. So it was an amazing evening to see those parents. My first student award ceremony for all of you who are used to doing that was pretty amazing to see the number of not only. Academic students, but also our student athletes who were recognized that evening. Uh, thank you so much for all the work you put into that. Uh, Dr. Richard, uh, hosted us for that meet and greet for the, uh, Western Association of Accreditation. Uh, to actually see her team as well as the adjudicators who were all present. Of course, we just, uh, ate our barbecue and then waved goodbye and left. Um. But it was pretty amazing to see what it takes. It's amazing. The, uh, Elbow Creek hosted us with, uh, President Gomoyen and Superintendent Schrum. Uh, to a tour of their campus and amazing picturesque view that she has from her office to see the. Now the snow on the mountains, which we don't normally are able to see. And I was amazed to actually see the superintendent sit down. He told you about reading with that student? He went to the floor and sat with that student to read that book. But in that same learning center were two retired teachers that I've known for many, many years. Who were there investing in two students and, and I too, as you said in our, your report. Mr. Schrum that would like to see more and more retired teachers who are able to do just that, continue to invest. Uh, into our students and expand our programs, uh, to those who really need it more and more. The first time I ever attended the Doc Band Dinner. Which I didn't know what that was, but now I'm well aware to build and navigate your destiny. And watch those students pick the brains of doctors and pharmacists and nurses to find out what it was like to be in their shoes. And in what it takes to get there. The Legally Blonde Junior at Ridgeview was amazing to watch. Mr. Yates greeted me at the door. He saw me there and he said, hey, welcome. And was surprised that my wife and I were there, but we enjoy encouraging everything that is a VAPA. Uh, origination and it was quite fun to see their closing night. And then a small thing I like to finish with is, you remember those metal roses that you like so much, President Gomoyen? At the metal shop at Golden West, we were there a couple of months ago? Well, something I happened to say to the metal shop teacher was that I'm doing a class right now of instruction out of Blue Scope for COS Training Resource Center. And he asked me if I could. Put him in contact with somebody to get some metal scraps. Well, tonight I found out, uh, Mr. Lambert informed me that. Not only did they connect, because at first like plant manager contacted me and said. Can you come pick it up Monday? I said, wait, 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 wait. You guys get together. I don't need to be in the middle of this. Golden West now has seven thousand pounds of metal to use in the metal shop. And that's another opportunity, just very serendipitous, but of partners that we can utilize and companies all around Visalia to help our students.
Thank you, um, board member Casper Saleno.
Thank you. So, um. I did read across America. I think we, we kind of had our board meeting in the middle of that week. I had already done Mountain View and Royal Oaks. But I went on to do Viva Blunt, Conyure and Ivanhoe. So it was quite the week. It was really fun. Uh, I visited Linwood with, uh, Board Clerk Gabby and Mr. Schrum, Superintendent Schrum. Um, that was wonderful, um. Uh, let's see what else. Oh, I did a, uh, the PTA principals luncheon as well. I know, uh, Mr. Belt already talked about that, so I'll just kind of fast forward. I know we don't want to go too late. Um, I also went to Redwood for the, um, WASC to, to, um, introduce them and, and I just wanted to, I'm, I'm sure. That the principal did, but one of the, um, WASC evaluators, is that the right term? Sure. Uh, he told me it was the best tri-tip sandwich he's probably ever had. So, um, always good to set them off with full bellies. Um, and then I just, this last week, uh, was able to do a panel at COS that Dr. Vegas, um. Kind of chaired, I think, um, that was kind of a women in politics for Women's History Month. So I was on there with, um. Ms. Shuklian and that from the Tulare County Board of Supervisors and. Miss Yolanda Flores, who is the, um, current mayor of Lindsay. Right? Mayor pro temp of Lindsay. Um, and it was a really nice panel. We had a good discussion. And, um, I just did want to tell my fellow female board members that I did shout all of you guys out and said that, um. There's a lot of boards in our, in our area who don't, who just have one female, um, and I feel very lucky to be on a board with all of you. Um, and so thank you. And lastly, just enjoy spring break. I hope that, um, everyone out there, teachers, principals, our support staff, um, everyone gets. To have a nice little break here and, um, I don't think it's supposed to rain. So even if you're local. Uh, for this spring. uh, for this spring break, you can hopefully enjoy yourself. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, and thank you for recognizing us. Board Member Neeler.
Yes, thank you. I, I, um, welcome serving with so many women. It's nice. Um, I'm going to try to do it really quickly also. Um, it seems like it's been over a month, but it tells me that there's a lot going on that our staff and our teachers are doing a lot of work because there's so many activities that we can, um, attend. I did go to the bond oversight committee, wanted just to, um, make a comment. Uh, one of the things that I take away was that they wanted to ensure that the community knew that the high school, new high school bonds have not been sold. We are not using those. There's a lot of confusion out there, so I just want to clarify that point. Um, also visited Washington Elementary School in Mount Whitney and, um, with, uh, Superintendent Shrum and also with trustee Vegas, um, great opportunity to see an elementary school. At Washington Elementary, it was obvious that, that, that principal, um, Mrs. Guerrero has a lot of rapport and we talk about that Visalia connected. It's obvious the kids came up to her, wanted her attention, you know, just giving her hugs and talking to her. And it, it was a very calming and yet, um, engaging, um, school site. Also went to Mount Whitney High School where we went to a lot of classrooms. Did see Mr., um, James, um, I'm trying to think of his last name, Lopez. And, um, in the computer science classroom, a lot of the kids were engaged, you know, they were all working. It was nice. We also went to the Military Academy there, got to see the kids working out. I thought, ooh, glad it's them and not me. I don't think I could do that right now. Um, also read across America with Highland Elementary. Um, the principal there was dressed up as Seuss and it was, again, lots of parents. They had a great showing and the kids, I was reading a book and the one, one student, uh, he was reading it for me. And he was just so, so excited about reading. I, I just, I thought, I'm going to let you read it because he was just, uh, it was, it was really a nice evening. Um, also did Doc Band. It was nice to see the turnout of all of our medical professionals from nurses to anesthesiologists to you name it, and the students engaging with them about their careers and what it takes and what is that, what does it entail? What do you do during the day? Just a great event. Kudos to, um, Elaine Rubio. I'm dating myself tabling. Um, she did a great job setting that up and also Vicky Leoni and all of the members on your team. Um, it was an amazing event. Um, I also saw Legally Blonde, very delightful, um, musical, the students, you know, you would not have known that they were middle school students because they did such an awesome job performing. And I just, it was, uh, I enjoyed the musical all night long. Um, just wanted to welcome our new, uh, student board member. So welcome. We love hearing from you. You did a great job tonight. And again, for everybody, I'm talking about the staff, um, in Visalia. Please take the week and rest and relax. You've really worked hard this whole year. You en- enjoy your spring break and don't just turn, turn it off for a little while. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Dr. Vegas.
Uh, thank you, President Gomoyan. As I was hearing some of my colleagues, I, I'm kind of like remembering to myself, oh yeah, I did that because there was, I felt like so much going on. Uh, participated in the student recognition ceremony with all of my colleagues. What a great night. Um, was able to visit Washington Elementary, Mount Whitney High School. Um, after our last board meeting, I was also able to participate and read across America at a GLC, which was a lot of fun. Um, so very thankful to, you know, teachers who also gave us some of their class times who could go in and read and connect with students, uh, and just really a great time, uh, at all of those, uh, sites. Um, was also able to visit, uh, Redwood High School with President Gomoyan. Uh, got to see some, you know, classes in choir, band, uh, social sciences, ethnic studies, our skills classes. Uh, got to see a little bit of the rally that was held last Friday. So a big shout out to all of our teachers, uh, students uh, across all of those sites, uh, that allowed us to visit, uh, and see, you know, education in action. Uh, big shout out to the leadership of all of our sites, Dr. Richard, uh, Dr. Aguilar, um, Principal Aguilar, Principal Guerrero, um, because it was, it was just a really great time. And I also want to thank all of our students and teachers, um, you know, for the flexibility, not just with some of the re-modernization at some of these sites. Like in the gym, we actually got to see, uh, that in action, really excited for that to be open and available to students and community in the future. Um, so thank you for all your flexibility with facilities, uh, but also thank you for all your flexibility with, uh, the weather in the past few weeks, um, you know, from reminding parents and community members to drive slow and to drive safe, uh, to just, just to make sure we got all of our students to and from school safely, uh, which is greatly appreciated to all of our staff, our site teams. Um, as mentioned earlier, got to visit the Golden West Showcase where I got to see a lot of the color guards and drum lines perform their winter shows, uh, and they will be competing this Saturday at, uh, the South Valley Winter Arts Association Championships at West Hills College. So best of luck to all those groups performing, uh, all the soloists. Um, thank you to all of our coaches, band directors and parents who play a huge role in making sure those students have the performance of a lifetime. Uh, and then finally, before I conclude, just wanted to say again, happy Women's History Month. Uh, happy early Cesar Chavez Day. Very grateful to all of our farm workers uh, who put food on our table and make sure that we're not only able to feed all of our students here at the USD, uh, but really everyone around the world. So thank you. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Um, Board Clerk Gabby.
Um, I think yes, definitely. Everything I think was about mentioned either, um, by my fellow board members or in our spotlight. Um, but on that, one of the, um, classrooms that I got to read to was Mrs. Mo's class that, um, was shared in the spotlight about, they had won the California State Champions for the primary conference in Reed Bowl twenty-three, but was, what was actually so, um, touching about that and why the school visits? And I think all of these events are so important is it was just their teacher was excited about reading. So they were excited about reading. They had their certificates and they were like, they wanted to show off that they were readers. And it didn't really even matter like what competition it was. It was just that their teacher got them excited about learning. And so when we get to see that on school visits, we just thank you staff. Um, and I thank you also for that. We're going out of our way to find opportunities for every individual student. I mean, to hear the Mount Whitney student talk, even though it's a program for eighteen students out of thirty thousand, that is so meaningful to them. So thank you to staff that's going out of their way to find opportunities that are truly meaningful to each individual student. And that's my report.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna try to make this short as well. Um, visited, um, Elbow Creek, La Jolla, and what I noticed when I was visiting, um, those schools, I could tell PLCs were working. Also those classrooms were very inviting. Um, read around, uh, read across America. I've forgotten what it's like when a lesson fails because I accidentally picked a book that was above the head of kindergartners. And you know, you get that, you know, they're not tracking with you. So I had to kind of just show pictures and make up the story. And then it was so cute because then I asked them, okay, do you want to, you want to read a book about an old lady or a leprechaun? And they go, oh, the old lady like you. And I go, okay. Great. So kids are just wonderful. Um, thank you, uh, Redwood and Sequoia for your hard work on accreditation. I've been a co-chair on accreditation team. It's a lot of work. Thank you. And I know you're going to do well. They were very impressed with our, with those two schools. Um, I want to thank, um, of course, Vicky Leoni and her whole department for, um, Doc Band. But I also want to give a shout out to my friend Elaine Rubio, who is a retired teacher who volunteers her time with the college and career department. So thank you, Elaine. Um, went to, also went to see, um, uh, Legally Blonde. It was, I didn't know that was a musical. It was adorable. I went to the Golden West FFA Forty Second Annual Sweetheart Dinner. And yeah, I can't believe Golden West has been around that long. Makes me feel old. Um, the Highland, when there was Read Across America, Highland actually had a literacy night. So there were parents there. So that was really fun to see the parents. Um, a Board Clerk, uh, Gabby and I and, um, Mr. Pacina, we went to the CSBA Legislative Action Week. And so we had, um, three days meeting with our legislators. Um, and I had to kind of do some phone calls after the fact because I, there's legislation that's specific for us. So to be able to talk to them and they were very receptive to that. So, and just thank you. I know what it's like to drag yourself to Friday before vacation. You've done a great job, everybody. Please rest. Thank you. Superintendent Shrum.
All right. Well, thank you. I think our board, uh, student board member for highlighting all of the amazing things that are happening in our schools, of course, because of our teachers, our students, our families. And so I'll just simply say, as we've done the, the spotlight as well, um, you know, to enjoy spring break for our staff that, uh, will not be working, take some time, recharge. And, and for those that might be working, hopefully you also find that time to be an opportunity to recharge and do some things that you've had on the list, but maybe haven't been able, uh, to tackle. Um, and come back and we're going to finish strong. We know we have things we need to work on to make sure we finish strong. We're engaging in those conversations. Um, and so that's what it's about, right? It's the time of year to make sure we've made that parent phone call of, of a student that might need a little push to get across the line, right? Or to get across the stage or what might ever, you know, they might need. It's the time of the year for, uh, the musicals, the sporting events, those sorts of things. So, um, it is tiring, but it's also fun, uh, and it is about crossing that finish line. So let's work together. Um, and I know if we do that, we're going to be able to get not only our students across the finish line, but ourselves, uh, teachers and, and others as well. So thank you for the work you do every day. Uh, and I hope that you have a safe and recharging, uh, spring break as well. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. Thank you. Let's not walk, um, move on to Agenda Item twelve point one, Recommended Expulsions. Do I have a motion?
A motion.
Okay, second, second. Motion by K. Spears Salano, second by Board Member Neeler. All in favor?
Student Board Representative abstains and motion carries six zero with one absent.
Agenda item thirteen point one, revision, revision to board policy six one four six point one. High school graduation requirement. Superintendent Shrum.
Thank you, President, uh, Gomoyan, board members. Um, this is a revision. If you remember this policy, uh, we had some discussion last time and, and what we have done is gone back, uh, and taken the graduation policy to its original form, uh, with only one addition. And that has to do with, uh, a graduation requirements centered around ed code for students that might be on an IEP, uh, that allows them to graduate, uh, with the state minimum. Uh, again, this is very specific to a certain number of students, uh, certain criteria, right? To help them, uh, walk across the stage. Many of the other things that the board talked about, part of the reason we did this was because we wanted to create the right conditions for us to engage in that conversation. More around what should our profile of a graduate be? What should the graduation requirements be? Part of why we need to do that in a board workshop is so that we've also had time to engage our parents and our community. And so this will be part of the feedback that we ask our families and our parents to give us when we go out and do our strategic plan information. So when we come together, probably in May, we'll be able to bring that information back along with additional questions, uh, and additional insight from this board on what they really want the graduation policy to be. And so just wanted to point out that tonight's, um, policy revision only includes, uh, the language around the special ed modification that is also part of ed code.
Thank you. Is there any public comment? Any board comment or questions?
Uh, nope. Just wanted to say, uh, I'm grateful to you all, my colleagues in, uh, taking that additional time to ask questions. We had that brief discussion, uh, and I'm looking forward to that longer discussion during the board workshop. And I appreciate, uh, the time you all and, and our, our staff and administration as well are taking to make sure we have these deep conversation, deep conversations, these enriching conversations. Um, and so I look forward to that. I'm grateful for your time and your questions and looking forward to that discussion.
Do I have a motion to accept the revision for the board policy?
Motion to approve?
Seconds, yeah.
Okay, uh, on a motion by Board Member Neeler, second by, uh, Board Member Vegas, all in favor?
Student Board Representative votes yes and motion passes six zero.
Agenda item thirteen point two, twenty-two, twenty-three, VUSD Second Intern Financial Report. Mr. Hernandez.
Good evening, President Gomoyan, members of the board and Superintendent Shrum. This is our second interim report for the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. And we're recommending that the board make, uh, take an action to approve this item. So we start with our core beliefs. Um, and, and you know, this is how the board allocates resources to ensure that students achieve at high levels. And so that is the reason, you know, we present these, uh, these, uh, budget items to the board. And we're going to talk a little bit about the general fund unrestricted, um, side of the budget as well as some of, look, take a look at some of our carryover and some of the one-time funds that we have and included in the budget for this year. We'll look at multi-year projections. So the next three years out. And then we'll take a look at, um, what's coming ahead. You also have on the dais in front of you, a summary of the second interim report. So that's just a little bit more information and detail about, about the report. That's not the three hundred page report that would come out in here or documents. So the purpose of the second interim report, um, is to certify the district's ability to meet our financial obligations for the current year and the next two fiscal years. And so we are bringing a positive certification to you. What that means is that the district is able to meet our three percent reserve. We're also showing a positive predict, projection for the next two fiscal years. Our reserve level is just over that three percent because that's based off of expenditures and we have over a hundred and fifty million dollars in one-time funds and, and, uh, in expenditures. And so when we look at what our actual reserve is in the out years, we are at that ten percent cap rate that the state has set for us. Um, this report includes all activity through January thirty-first, so more than halfway through the year. Um, and it must be filed by March seventeenth. Well, we did not meet that timeline due to our council board meeting. We've worked with the county office and we worked with them before canceling the meeting to ensure that, um, there was no penalties or anything for not making that date. This, the county has until April fifteenth to file this report with the state and we're still on track for that. So, uh, we're good. Thank goodness. Otherwise we would have had a board meeting. Um, so this is just a reminder of where we are in the process, um, with our budget and LCAP development. So we're here in March. Um, the next time I'll come in front of you will be in May when the governor issues his May revision. And then we'll be back in front of you in June with our adopted budget. In the meantime, we're continuing to build our budget as, you know, Mr. Shrum mentioned in, in the report on, uh, next year's programming, all of those things are being, uh, built into the, the budget for next fiscal year. So this slide is a general fund summary. So if I could kind of orient, orient you on the chart, it's our adopted budget, our first interim, second interim, and then the variance is the change between the first and second interim. So very little changes between first and second interim. We have most of our changes between adopted and first interim when we bring in carryover and all those other things. Uh, we did have some, uh, slight increases in our LCFF funding that was based on some changes that the state made to the additional base funding that we received. Um, special education, we did end up receiving some additional funds, uh, through the SELPA. They are looking at changing that, that funding formula for the SELPA. And so, um, as they are making some of those adjustments, there is some additional funding that will come to schools. Um, on the expense side, uh, we had some, uh, increases for salaries and benefits and capital outlay. Most of that was, is a result of the expanded learning programs as well as, um, the use of ESR funds for some of our HVAC projects. So, um, Valley Oak was a large project that is, is happening now, uh, as part of ESR funding, one-time funds. On the, so general fund, just in total in revenues, about sixty percent of our revenues come through our LCFF. That's the state monies. Typically that number's around eighty percent. But again, because we have these one-time funds within our budget, both federal and state, um, it's, it's adjusting the typical percentages that we see. Same thing goes for salaries and benefits. Usually that's about eighty-five percent of our budget. Now it's sixty-five percent. Again, a lot of one-time funding that is in services and capital outlay and materials and supplies. When we focus on just the unrestricted side of the budget, this is really our operational budget where we pay, you know, most of our teaching staff and most of our other staff. Um, we have in the chart here, the twenty-two, twenty-three budget as adopted, first interim, second interim, and then the change between those two. Again, very little change between, uh, first interim and second interim. As I mentioned, the increase in LCFF funding and then a few one-time projects that are funded for, uh, VCIS. As I mentioned, the increase in LCFF funding and then a few one-time projects that are funded for, uh, VCIS and, and that are building out Grace Church as well as, um, our network redundancy and reliability project. Uh, so as we talk about, uh, revenues versus expenditures and you can see more expenditures. When we pull out those one-time expenditures, expenditures, we actually have a surplus in our current year budget of just over sixteen, close to seventeen million. Again, that was the one-time, uh, salary payment that we made to staff beginning of the school, been, beginning of the fiscal year, and then carryover projects and some other one-time projects. And so when we build that out into our multi-year projection, we look out at the next two years, we do show a surplus when we pull out all of those one-time costs that are in our current budget. One thing I did want to share is, you know, as we're looking at next year's budget, twenty-three, twenty-four, the cost of living adjustment is projected to be just over eight percent, the COLA. When we look at what that means as far as our funded COLA, it's, it's just over six point three percent. And the reason there's a, a difference there is because in the current year, the state adopted a three-year average for our attendance. And so as our enrollment has stayed pretty steady, attendance did drop through, throughout the pandemic. And so we're now kind of ratcheting down to what our actual attendance is. And so as an example of that in the current year, because we're using a three-year average, our current year funded ADA is twenty-six thousand, three hundred. If we were funded on actual, it would be twenty-five thousand, six hundred. And so we're actually receiving about eight million dollars more in funding this year using the average than if we were using just our, our actuals. And so is that what kind of ratchet down? That COLA doesn't become real, it becomes a, a different number than, our funded COLA becomes a different number than the state COLA. So we'll talk more about that as we get through May revision and, and budget adoption, but just wanted to kind of preface that here uh, for what you see. Cause if you just do the math, it's not eight percent. People like to do the math. I like to do math. Um.
You do like.
I'm excited. Uh, so a, as I've mentioned, Governor Newsom will come back in May with a revision. Uh, as it's currently proposed, the COLA is eight point one three percent. We'll see what the actual COLA is. As we've talked about, um, state tax returns now aren't due for about seventy percent of California until October. So there will be some estimates at the state level that they will have to true up, um, at the end of the year. Uh, but again, in that state budget, there's no new programs, um, and continuing with our expanded learning and TK. Uh, Prop ninety-eight or Prop twenty-eight, as, uh, Mr. Thompson mentioned, we're continuing to plan for that. We've been planning for that since November seventh or whatever the day was after the election. And I think that's why we're in a better position now than probably a lot of districts. Um, but we do still have some of these other challenges. Of course, inflation and all those other things that are impacting everyone in the state. So with that, be happy to answer any questions.
Is there any public comment? Any board comment or questions?
So Nathan, the, the eight point, the COLA eight point one three. Is that a guarantee or, or could that because of the way the state's going and that could go down?
It, it could, it, it will change. Um, so that was the proposal from the governor in his January budget proposal. Um, the, the COLA is not calculated yet, but that'll be coming out pretty soon. What the actual COLA is, the state will have to decide if they're gonna fund it. So that will happen in the May revision. May fifteenth.
Thank you.
Oh, go ahead.
When we're looking at the ADA versus, like, how many students do we have enrolled in our district?
So we're right around twenty-nine thousand students. And so when we look at ADA, that's about a seven or eight percent absence rate. Normally we're about four, five percent absence rate. So it's, it's a significant.
And just the difference in about a thousand there, it reduces our funding by eight million dollars.
By a lot. Yep. It's about thirteen thousand per student.
Any other questions or comments? Can I have a motion to approve the second interim financial report?
Motion to approve?
All second.
On a motion by Board Member Naylor, second by, um, Dr. Vegas, all in favor?
Student Board Representative votes yes and motion passes six zero.
Thank you.
Agenda Item thirteen point three. I will now open the public hearing to allow for public comment on the Visalia Unified Teachers Association interest initial proposal for certi- certificated negotiations. Um, our presenter is, uh, VUTA President, Mr. Greg Price.
It says on, now it sounds on. I get that a lot when somebody gives me a mic. No power. Greg Price for the Teachers Association. Good evening, Board President Gamoyen, Board Members and Superintendent Shrum. Two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four of UTA sunshine proposals goes as follows. With the entire collective bargaining agreement, the CBA being open this year, VUTA will be discussing issues and opening CBA articles that benefit our bargaining unit members and the students we serve. We are also interested in working on articles that need to be updated. Some articles we will focus on this year are Article Three, Safety Conditions of Employment, Article Eight, Class Size, Article Ten, Salaries, and Article Twelve, Employment Benefits. We will also be introducing a new article to the collective bargaining agreement regarding special education. District is proposing several initiatives that affect wages, hours and working conditions. And we will be addressing any articles that are impacted by these initiatives. Additionally, we will open articles as the need arises throughout the bargaining process. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone like to provide public comment on the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four Visalia Unified Teachers Association interest initial proposal for certificated negotiation? I will now close the public hearing and reconvene regular session. Board members, may I have a motion to acknowledge receipt of the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four Visalia Unified Teachers Association initial interest proposal for certificated negotiations?
All motion to acknowledge receipt?
All second.
Okay, on a motion by Board Member Vegas, second by Board Member Naylor, all in favor?
Student Board Representative votes yes and motion passes six zero.
What? Did I do something wrong? Okay. All right, um. Item thirteen point four, Public Hearing Visalia Unified School District Interest Initial Proposal for Certificated Negotiations, Second Read. Mr. Ben Dillon.
No problem. We're just juggling.
Open, sorry. I will now open the public hearing to allow for, oh, we're good.
You did it. You're good. Yeah. Good evening, Board President Gamoyen, members of the board, Superintendent Shrum. Uh, Ben Dillon here to share a second read of our proposal. Um, I, I've read the, uh, intro to you previously, so I will actually skip down here to just specifically address the district interests. Um, district interests include ensuring all students achieve at high levels and demonstrate continuous growth, providing learning environments that are safe, supportive and innovative, supporting employees' success and equipping them with the tools necessary for achievement and growth, maintaining district reserves to preserve the instructional program for all students during economic cycles, and engaging in an open and honest exchange of information through collaborative and objective interest-based bargaining with the Visalia Unified Teachers Association. As Mr. Price mentioned, the entire collective bargaining agreement will be open this year. Um, in addition, negotiating these contract-specific aspects related to mutually identified student-specific, uh, priorities. We do intend to also establish a special education article, and we look forward to good faith negotiations with the associations, uh, and where we both continue to acknowledge our commitment to provide exemplary education programs to the students and community that we serve.
Thank you. I would just like to note that we opened a public meeting. Would anyone like to provide public comment on Visalia Unified School District's interest initial proposal, proposal for certificated negotiations? I will now close the public hearing and reconvene regular session. Board members, may I have a motion to approve twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four Visalia Unified School District Interest Proposal for certificated negotiations?
All motion.
All second.
On a motion by Case Bear Saleno, on a Board Member Case Bear Saleno, second by Board Member Gabby, all in favor?
Student Board Representative votes yes and motion passes six zero.
Item thirteen five, Making Findings of Ongoing Emergency Ratified Proposal from Associated Contracts and Authorized Continued Emergency Action.
Well, that was a mouthful. Now I'm, I've been told I'm on a stopwatch. So, um, what we're going to bring to you tonight, and this is, this is, uh, this was on the board meeting that we, that was canceled. So we're bringing this forward. Um, we're asking the board to, 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 uh, make findings that we have an ongoing emergency, which is, uh, was adopted, uh, through Resolution seventeen dash eighteen dash twenty-eight, delegating authority to the superintendent in, in emergency events um, to award contracts outside of the regular bidding process. So this is related to the January tenth storm that damaged seventeen of our school sites, um, energy management system and various, uh, other components, electrical components in seventeen sites. And so we're asking you to, uh, make the findings that we have that continuing emergency and to ratify the proposals for those, for that work that has already been, uh, started and that will continue.
Do I have a motion to approve?
All motion.
A second.
Motion by Board Member Case Bear Saleno, second by Board Member Belt.
Student Board Representative votes yes and motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item thirteen six, Warrant List, January twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three through February twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three.
Yes, this is our routine item to approve warrants issued between January twenty-eighth and February twenty-third of twenty-twenty-three.
Any public comment? Any board comment? Or questions?
I motion to approve.
Second.
On a motion by Board Member Case Bear Saleno, second by Board Member Naylor, all in favor?
Student Board Representative votes yes and motion passes six zero with one absent.
This board meeting is now adjourned. Thank.